Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Planning Commission meeting. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call?
Commissioner Davis.
I'm here.
Commissioner Wong.
Present.
Commissioner Quigg.
Present.
Commissioner Feng.
Yes.
All righty, we're all here. Agenda review. Does anybody want to change the order or have any questions on the agenda tonight? Are we good?
Mm-hmm.
All righty. Minutes. We have four sets to consider. Take the oldest one first, March 11th.
I have a couple of little tiny corrections. Under the roll call, I'm counting too many commissioners, and I don't know who Jung is. Okay, so let's remove Jung. On that same page, at the bottom, under Public Hearings Number Eight, correct me, it's just that I think we're talking about the Millbrae Station project, and yet there's reference to Developers' Republic Millbrae. I think that needs to be deleted.
What paragraph is that in? Is it on the first page or the second page?
First page.
It's on the first page of March 11th.
All right, okay.
Public hearing eight, all the way at the bottom of the page. Developers' Republic Millbrae.
Oh, right there.
Mm-hmm.
Good catch.
Huh?
Good catch.
You know, I was trying to catch this. And then I have a question under Public Comments. And once again, we're going back almost three months, and my brain isn't so good anymore. But under Public Comments, and I know it was a public comment question, but the buffer wall will lose 10 feet of the property, and I don't remember hearing that at all. I think during the construction, she would lose...
I think that's what her concern was, exactly.
Okay.
That there would be some level of encroachment under their property during construction.
Exactly, but maybe we can add a little something on that, because it looks like they're going to lose it forever.
Just add at the end of the sentence.
Okay, so, yeah, that's for this one here. Does anyone else have comments?
On number 13, the announcement, I think I said thank you for the support for not Chinese business, but the Peninsula Chinese Business Association, abbreviated PCBA. Thank you.
Can I, oh, yes, just a general comment. I actually felt like a lot of this was very unclear, so, I mean, I...
New word.
It just, I mean, under, I just put in a lot of different places, but where it was just fragments of sentences, and it'll say something like 15-foot setback and 45-degree angle. That's it. On the top of page two, I mean, that's just one, kind of jumps at you. Specific Plan Amendments. What about it? It doesn't say anything, so there's no context, as Commissioner Feng was saying next to me. And then even for number nine, there's a long end of Public Comment, and then it has the Commission Comments, and then it's just a list of, you know, it's not really clear. Like, it'll say applicant will repair, but not be responsible for the fix, but will pay for fix of temporary impermanent wall, as they can only work on their side of the property. It just feels very, like, if I were, I mean, I was here at this meeting, and even then, I had to, like Commissioner Quigg was asking about the buffer wall, you know, it just, things were not very clear, but I think just overall, I felt like I, I wasn't, I felt like there were a lot of things that were not clear. It was very fragmented, incomplete sentences, fragmented, the tenses go back and forth, there are random capitalization, and, I mean, I know that ultimately, we do have a video recording everything with details, but at the same time, most people aren't going to go back and listen to a four- or five-hour video, or watch a video. I think for the minutes, if there's going to be any comment, if it's only action items, I get that, or if there's going to be a comment, then the comments should be clear. So it should be, you know, one or the other, but I, and I know, you know, it was a long meeting, and there was a lot going on, but it just felt like, you know, what does specific Plan Amendments mean?
It was three months ago.
You know, I get that it was three months ago, but, you know, it's, there are times when, like, tonight, we're going to be talking about Juanita, and we had the meeting in March, so we actually have the minutes there, and so, you know, when we have projects that come back to us, or some issue comes up, it's nice to be able to go to the minutes and go, oh, yeah, that issue came up, and kind of be prompted at it, but...
Yeah, I think, I think I understand what you're saying. We were kind of caught between those action minutes and doing full, sort of, verbatim, sort of, minutes, and we're trying to make the shift, so I think we just needed to clean it up and be a little bit more clear on, sort of, what that context is, and just get it into a better shape, so we can do that.
So, I mean, so my feeling is, if, again, if we're going to say, we just want action items, go look at the video for anything else, we can do that, but to have some comments that just say 15-foot setback and 45-degree angle, what does that mean? You know, then might as well not have it in there, because it creates more, or even the 10-foot buffer wall, under Public Comments, the first person who spoke, Millie Kukin, did not even mention the buffer on her, because it's not her property, so she would not have mentioned the 10-foot buffer concern. That would have been under the ducautes, the second statement. So I just, if, again, if we say we're just going to do action, keep it actions fine. If we're going to do comments, then the comments need to be really clear, and I just felt like they weren't, so sorry. I don't want to create work, but I think...
I think a lot of the comments were in support or in commentary on the staff measures that they brokered with the developer to have these additional mitigation measures, or something prefaced it in the public hearing statement, that, you know, these mitigation measures were agreed upon by the developer and staff to support citizen concerns or residential concerns. So a lot of all of these things about the buffers and the 45-degree or the removing the balconies, they were all, I guess, negotiated with the developer. So, like, on the end of the Public Comments, specific comments, for example, would be, retailers active use space inquiries of lighting plan asked to comply. Commission thanks staff and the neighbors for working with the developers to reach these mutual agreements, something to that effect. And then also, Mr. Muzy, he made a comment at the end, also, he's requesting that these agreements be put in writing, too. So just to balance neighborhood concerns and the developer concerns. I have notes here. He specifically asked for these agreements to be placed in writing.
Where is this one at, please?
The...
Is it still the 11th?
So it might be clear that the staff understands what they're written down, that these agreements were made, and they were negotiated with the developer, but it might be clearer stated that, you know, like, on page one, all north-facing balconies removed, which previously faced hemlock, 12-foot temporary noise, dust, and disruption burial. Those make it clear that those were all agreed upon by the developer in discussions to address neighborhood concerns.
So will this come back to us again?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to set aside March 11th. Are we setting aside March 14th for the same reasons, or is this one a different format?
Pretty much the same. I have one comment on the March 14 special meeting minutes. Add to those notes that I recused myself from the proceedings based on the request of the developer.
Oh, is that one you were recusing? Is that the one? That's important.
What section would that go under?
Maybe through the chart. I mean, it's showing that he didn't approve, I mean, it was not approved by Commissioner Feng at the very bottom on the second page, so maybe there it can just be noted, you know, Commissioner Feng...
Was recused.
Was recused, yes.
I wasn't recused.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Wong, Commissioner Jung, whoever that is. Commissioner Wong, I'm just making it up. Commissioner Wong was recused.
Because there were only four.
So it would be three, right. So it should be three, one, with the one recused, yes.
One recused, yes.
And on the roll call, it should really be Vice Chair Feng, not Co-Chair. I appreciate the promotion, but I don't think it's appropriate.
Yeah.
And I think that goes the same for 18th and April 1st.
Got it.
We're on the...
I got a motion.
I know.
Did you change your position?
I got a team motion.
Okay, so, but are these closer, or do we need to revisit the content of these as well?
I think we should.
Okay.
At this point, I think, let's, let us take another crack at clarifying, giving more context, and I'm going to work with the Clerk's Office a little bit on a few things, so why don't we just go ahead and table those, and we'll bring them back at the next hearing.
All four of them?
Yeah, I think so.
Thank you, and if, I'd like to offer the, I don't mind reading through it before, if you'd like me to, just to, because I'm the one who ends up kind of picking at things, but I don't mind doing that as well, just kind of on the side to help just clarify from my perspective.
Just to get the format right, right?
It's, it's, it's just that if there are comments that are not clear, it just needs to be made clear, and I think we just want to make sure, again, if we decide to say we're just going to do action items, that's fine, but those action items should be clear, and then if not, if we're going to add comments, because I think comments are helpful, because we don't memorize every meeting, that, at least I don't, so having that would be helpful, just kind of to be a little bit, just as you're going through it, there are some random capitalization, that, that's just my pet peeve, so if you can get rid of, there are some places where it wasn't necessary, so, and then setback should be one word, so, instead of a space in between.
If anybody else has any other specific comments that they want to make on these items, please give them to staff, if you had, the ones we didn't review in detail, okay? If there was something in particular.
Email them to the staff.
That'll work. Or chat with them later, whichever. Just make sure they get them. All righty, done with the minutes. Public communication. This is the time set aside for anybody who would like to address the Planning Commission on something that is within our purview, but not on tonight's agenda. Are there any speaker slips down there? Does anybody have anything to say? Nope? Okay, we'll close that. Old business, we don't have any. We have two public hearings tonight. The first is 635 Santa Barbara Avenue. A design review permit to allow a two-story rear horizontal addition to an existing two-story residence and a setback exception request to allow less than the minimum required second-floor setbacks located in a single-family residential zone. Sam's got the staff report.
I'll just skip this first slide, since you described the project.
Is your mic on? Is your mic on? Okay.
The project site is located in the north-central portion of Millbrae, in the Cappuccino subdivision, 0.22 miles west of Cappuccino High School. The site is located between Lamita Avenue to the north and Bayview Avenue to the south. The property is a 10,011-square-foot interior lot containing about 1,900-square-foot single-family split-level two-story residence, including a rear two-car detached garage, zoned, the single-family residential R1 identified in the general plan as low-density residential. This is a photo of the site from the front, and this is the location of the property, 635 Santa Barbara, and you'll note they share a driveway access with a neighbor here for The proposed project is going from 2,894-square-foot home to a 4,147-square-foot home. The staff would like to note that there are some corrections to the table in the staff report to clarify this, so those corrections will be made. The project was submitted in February 9th, 2016, for design review. In 2018, the applicant hired a new architect and submitted revised plans for review on December 7th, 2018. The application review was deemed complete on May 28th, 2019. The existing residence is a split-level two-story home with a lot that slopes downward toward the rear of the lot. The lower first floor contains front crawl space and rear basement area and a laundry room. The upper, what is being called the second floor, upper or main floor, contains a covered front porch entry, living room with fireplace, hallway connecting to three bedrooms with closets, one bathroom, kitchen, laundry spaces, and access to a rear deck. There is an existing rear two-car detached garage with driveway access from the north side of the house. The front landscaping would remain unchanged and includes a front planning hedge along the sidewalk with two existing trees at each corner, the white picket fence with along the sides, a brick walkway, water fountain, planter beds, and a variety of flowers and shrubs pouring the front of the house. The existing roof pitch is 412. The adjacent neighbor's support, there were five neighbor consultation forms submitted in support, and then the immediate neighbor to the west, at 639 Santa Barbara, did not respond to the neighbor consultation form. The project meets the development standards for R1 with the exception of a second-floor setback exception on the north and south elevations. The data on this is on page four of the staff report. This slide here indicates the locations of where the additions will occur. There's, this is a two-story horizontal addition at the rear here, which will connect to the existing garage, and then this is the sunroom two-story addition on the side here, which is, will be also part of the addition. So talk a little bit about the proposed project. The proposed project would demolish the existing rear deck and add a rear horizontal lower first floor addition to the rear of the house with a separate entry porch from the north side elevation accessing a guest bedroom, laundry closet space, and bathroom. The upper second floor would add a master bedroom, bathroom, and walk-in closet to the rear of the existing house. In addition, the new sunroom would be constructed at the north elevation side of the home connecting to the existing living room, and the existing rear detached two-car garage would remain and be connected to the new rear horizontal addition. This slide here indicates the existing and proposed site. This is the existing footprint of the house and the existing garage. This garage, there's an easement located here, and the garage is an existing non-conforming garage in the sense that it's within the setback, but this is not being touched. Again, this shows the two areas where the addition, the two-story additions will occur, and on both sides of the addition, the applicant is requesting setback exceptions. So for this length of 22 feet on this side, and on this side, the second-story wall would be flush with the ground floor wall, and then at this portion, there's an exception request here of 12 feet for this addition here. This is a closer view of the existing first and second floor. This is the proposed first and second floors, and highlighted in the green shading. And these are the existing north and south elevations, existing front, west and east rear elevation. This is the proposed south and north elevation, and I've highlighted in green the portion where the new addition would be, would occur. This side shows where the existing garage is, and this area here is the, the new sunroom addition with a basement area. The proposed west and east elevations. As you can see, the, the rear addition isn't really visible from the front of the street, so the exception, as requested on both sides, would match and integrate with the existing building footprint, and is located to the back. And again, staff did not receive any concerns from adjacent neighbors regarding privacy or views. This is the existing and new roof plan, again, showing in green the locations where the two-story horizontal additions would occur. Planning Commission is instructed to look at the design review findings as required for this proposed project, and also the setback exception findings pursuant to the municipal, So staff is recommending approval of the proposed project for a design review to allow a two-story rear horizontal addition to an existing two-story residence and setback exception request to allow less than the minimum required second-floor setbacks located in the single-family residential R1 zoning district. This concludes my presentation, and I'm available to answer questions. The applicant, I believe, is here also to, to answer questions.
Okay. Jane?
Thank you. You mentioned that there are some changes on the staff chart. Can you please go through those so that we can have the same numbers? Thank you.
So on page four of the staff report chart, the maximum floor area ratio existing is 2,894 square feet with a percentage of 34%, and that will go up to 48% for a total addition of 4,147 square feet, and this is for the floor area ratio.
I'm sorry, Sam. Is it me? I'm, is this, are you talking about the, I'm saying, you said there was some corrections to be made, so...
Yes, in the, in the table.
Yes, can you just go through those corrections?
On page four.
Yes.
So that's the correction. The, right, right now, it's showing 26%, 2,563 square feet as the existing FAR. That's, that's going to be corrected. It should be 34% for an FAR of 2,894 square feet. It should be 34% for an FAR of 2,894 square feet.
So the only correction is to existing?
To the existing FAR. Yep.
Okay, I, then if I may ask a question then? On first floor, south setback on that chart?
On the, in the table on page four?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Yes.
The south, it's showing as 86. Aren't the north and side, north and south, those are the side setbacks, right? No? Aren't they the north, the, the side ones? Because that's, on the second floor, north and south is where we're asking for the exceptions, which is?
Oh, right, yeah.
Right and left.
That's the, the first floor south setback.
That should be?
Let's take a look at that.
Five? No.
Yeah, let me pull up the, let me pull up the plans so they can see.
Nine, eight?
Let's do this better.
I believe the south setback is the rear setback in this case.
Yes, so.
Right?
No.
So the south setback.
Eighty-six feet probably is the, is the back.
Is the rear. Yeah, that's the rear setback.
The south?
And so that's indicating the, the, the square foot, or the, the linear distance in feet from the building to the rear property line.
Okay, if that's the case, then the label for the second floor should not be north and south side setback, because it says south side setback right here.
Right.
So one of the labels, something's weird.
Right, so, so that would be, right, so, so that would be, it looks like the, yeah, the elevations are, so, yeah, the west, the second floor north should read second-floor west side setback. And then, and that's for where they're proposing the setbacks on both sides, or the setback on one side there. And that 22 feet at the rear, and then the setback where the sunroom is of 12 linear feet near the front there. And then the second floor, where it says second-floor south, that should be second-floor east side setback.
East?
Second-floor east side setback is a setback request of zero feet for 22 linear feet. So yes, that, that's correct. Those should be labeled west, second-floor west side setback and second-floor east side setback. And then the 86 feet 10 inches existing and proposed, that's the distance from the existing building to the property line.
Rear.
Right, the rear property. Right, yeah, it would be, yeah, in other words, first floor south in parentheses, rear setback.
Okay, in which case, first floor north is also mislabeled, because that should be west or east, right? First floor north setback is not five feet. And that's north, if you're following that, is the?
Right, right, so, so those, those should be labeled, see, the first-floor front, that should actually be first-floor west. And first-floor north should be first-floor east.
No, so the first-floor front is correct. That's 24. The first floor north should actually be east.
North was west on the second floor.
It's, no.
East, and then, and then we need a west also, because there's no west in here.
There's the west. And this is the east.
The house is facing west.
No.
No, south.
It's facing north, and then this is facing south. So here is south.
I found that really confusing in the drawings and also interior, so I couldn't really make heads or tells. It seemed?
I mean, they do have a bearing on the plan if you look at A1 0.1. The front really should be northwest. The rear should be southeast.
Right.
Because it actually has a bearing on it. But I think the chart, it's, doesn't say whether it is north or south, whether it is, yeah, it's all either north or south or front and back. It doesn't specifically address the true bearing.
On the plan sheet, A 0.1, here's the north arrow. So staff defined this as south, the front as north, and then east and west.
Okay.
We didn't break it down. Normally, we don't break it down to northwest, southwest, southeast.
Yeah, we understand that.
To try to?
And I'm fine with that, but again, your chart doesn't have the first-floor side setbacks, two of the, it only has one side setback.
Okay, yes.
The way it is right now.
All right, staff will correct that. Thank you.
So, and maybe as a, it might be good to have both directional and, so like, west side, west side setback, north front step, or south front setback, or something just to kind of?
Sure, yeah.
Either that, or it has to be clear, or northeast, or southeast, or whatever it is, to make it really clear, because, you know, trying to go through this and compare to plans and, you know, just going back and forth, but the side setbacks are actually important. The first-floor side setback is actually really important, because we're now asking for a second-floor setback exception. So if we can just make some corrections to those.
Yes.
Thank you. And I did have one other question, if I may. So you said that they hired a new architect in 2018?
Yes, yeah. I want to provide that as background, because if you notice the date when the submittal came in and then to where we are now, part of that, I wanted to explain that, part of that is because?
You need your mic closer to you.
Microphone's?
Like this? Yes. Can everybody hear me now? Yes, so the, the background basically states that they had a new architect about a year ago, so that's why the length of time that it was, you know, staffers reviewing it, we had a new architect, some revision of plans.
So related to that, and I'm not sure if maybe it's better addressed to the applicant, though, is that the neighbor responses are all dated for 2016.
Yes.
If there was a new plan in 2018?
There was no new plan. It was, it was just a, it was a new architect, and they, basically, the, the only change was, initially, they had talked about demolishing the garage at the rear, and then they decided, no, we're not going to do that, we'll keep it as is. So that was the only?
That was the only change, okay.
There was no, no other change. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
Mr. Feudling, I want to double-check one thing, is that the garage that is currently in existing condition?
Yes.
Was built in the 40s?
Yes, in the 1940s, yes.
Permanent?
Pardon me?
Was it permanent?
Yes, I, the, it was built with the, with the original home, so, yes.
The reason I asked that question was because it is actually sitting on a six-foot public utility easement. Not, not to mention only that it is also on a setback exception, but it's actually sitting on a public utility easement, wherein, had they demoed it, they would never be able to put it back on exactly the same spot.
Right.
And also, since, you know, we're adding this house, how close do we, how close to the public utility easement do we allow people to add?
So the, with the, an easement, the, basically, there's no structure allowed on the easement itself.
Right.
Go right up to the easement line.
Right up to the easement line?
Yes.
Okay. Do you know what's in there? Easement. Sewer?
Yes, it's a sewer easement, yep.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I have a question. So with the front of the house facing the street, it appears to be a one-story building structure, just from appearances.
Right.
And so if you extend that same story to the back of the house, when is that considered a second story? Because in the front of the house, it would be one story, but in the back of the house, it's considered a two-story to qualify for?
Yeah, that's a good question. It's confusing both, like, members of the public and applicants and architects that come in. And the way our code is written in Millbrae is any structure that's seven feet above exterior grade, measured from exterior grade, that the, that the second floor, or the floor, the second floor is above seven feet, that is considered a second story. So in Millbrae, there's a lot of split-level homes on hillsides. And so the, if there's a slope to the rear in the front, it looks like a, a single story. But if they're doing an addition at the back, and it's, and there's a slope down, and their, their addition is above seven feet, that would be considered a second-story addition. So it's subject to setback, setback requirements. And, and this type of home, when staff reviewed it, looking at the similar homes on the street and then on the adjacent home, that slope is, that pattern is all along that street. And what they're proposing to do is, is add a two-story horizontal addition, matching and integrating with the existing building. And it, it'll fit in with the neighborhood and in the context of the other buildings on the street. So staff felt that this was a reasonable request to, to ask for a setback exception to, in order to design, have good design of the home for the addition.
I think that's for discussion for later, just clarifying that code.
Sure.
If I could just add to that, too, I think if you take a look at Sheet A 2.0, it shows the side elevations of the house. That's kind of a good illustration that shows that when the slope falls away, you can see where areas of the crawl space get bigger and bigger. And so it's those areas of the crawl space, once they're above seven feet, qualifies as a first floor, even though that may not be the appearance from the front of the structure.
One thing I wanted to bring into attention is that the current property, even though the garage sits on the public utility easement, there's a gap between the garage and the main structure where you can actually get machinery back there should that easement need to be serviced. With this addition, basically, they're closing the gap between the building and the garage, where you cannot be able to drive a Bobcat in there, for example, if you need to dig up the sewer line and have it maintained. Had that consideration been made?
Our staff reviewed it, and Public Works reviewed it, and that, that comment or that concern was not, it did not come up.
So they're aware of that? They're aware of that they're going to close off?
They reviewed the plans and they?
They find that it's okay?
They're aware of the easement locations, they, they reviewed the plans, and that was not one of their comments on, on, or their concerns on, on the, on the plans, on the proposed plans.
Commissioner Fang, are you, repeat that?
So basically, what it is, is that between the garage and the main structure, there used to be enough space to drive a Bobcat through it, or drive some machinery through it, so that in case in the future that the sewer line need to be serviced, machinery can get back there and actually dig it up. And let's say they replace the sewer line, for example. That's what utility easement's supposed to do. Whereas if they were now proposed to add to that structure, they're closing off the gap between the main structure and the garage. For example, in the future, if the sewer line was ever need to be replaced, you would have to dig it out by hand.
So through the chair, at Plan Sheet A 0.1, there's an existing deck and steps here, so there's, it already is a little bit narrow right here. And show, and then I was going to show the overhead to? So this is the view currently as it is existing. And I believe there's a little bit of a, there's a, an alley where, there's a sort of an open area here where you can access to this area here, but there's a deck back here. And also the, the site photos, if you look at your packets and the site photos, also show what the back looks like. I, I don't have those for the monitor, but they have an existing fence and stairway and a porch back there. So as it is existing right now, the, there's not a real wide access for a tractor to go back there.
Okay.
I'm just wondering if there should be some sort of agreement between the property owner and the city, such that in the future, should that public utility easement need to be maintained and serviced, right? There's some sort of a fee reimbursement associated with the idea that you're closing off the access?
I, I think we have to trust that Public Works did review this, and they are the experts. If you can confirm that, that would be fabulous.
Yeah, we can confirm the other, the other point, too, is that even beyond the development design review permit, in the actual plan check, if an agreement like that needs to be worked out, we could certainly do that. If Public Works felt there was another design that needed to occur, and we could look at that, then if there are substantial changes, we'd bring it back. Otherwise, we could work that out through the plan check process prior to a building permit.
Please, put a sticky note on that, would you? Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, yes, Catherine?
Excuse me, it may be also for the architect, but I'm looking at the color charts on this sheet. And this is like, not even the front of the house, right? This is the side? Is there another door to get in there? Are you going to enter into the back?
It's a side door?
Yes.
A lot of homes have a side door?
Looks like a very nice side door. It looks like an entrance. I mean, that was just a comment, but the colors on this side don't really match up with the colors on the color sheet, right?
No. No, they don't. And, but I think the swatch that says the body color, the blue color that's existing, is the actual color. The illustration is gray, and it's not what it's going to look like. And the architect can confirm that later.
Well, I, I gathered that, but when we're
Yeah.
Going to approve a color chart, it really should be a little bit more
Yeah.
Of what it's going to be. And generally, it's, the front of the house should show more than the side. So I, I just would think that they should prepare a correct one.
My understanding is that they're not changing the front. I mean, they're, they're not going to, I don't believe they're going to change the color pattern of their front. They're, they're just doing the addition and, and going to be painting the side. But I could have that.
We'll ask.
Confirm that.
But then even this?
That was why, normally, that was why I didn't ask them to provide like a, a front elevation showing the, the paint chips for the front, because the applicant stated, we're not going to paint the front, we're not changing, we're going to paint the side.
Microphone, it's, microphone, Sam.
But the side is going to be like the front?
Yes.
Well, then, this should be the color of these.
Yeah, I think we can, we can confirm with the applicant.
Yeah. Anything else for Sam right now?
Sam, when we reviewed the plan, as I looked at this, you know, between the first and the second floor, we noticed, I noticed that there's no physical connection between the first floor and the second floor. You cannot get to the downstairs from the first floor.
Right, that's correct.
You have to go outside.
Right.
There's no interior connection between the two floors. You have to go outside.
So if it's raining, people have to go outside to get downstairs?
Yeah. How about if we have the applicant come up now? Are we done for Sam for the moment?
Yeah, the, there's connection on the second floor, but the first, the lower floor has a entrance from the, from the side of the?
All right.
The addition.
Okay, thank you, Sam. Can we have the applicant come up, please? Architect? Whoever, either what, applicant or architect, whoever's here?
Whoever, either what, applicant or architect, whoever's here?
Good evening, Commissioner Fang. I'm the owner of 635 San Pablo Properties. My name's Jerry.
Welcome, Jerry. Can you tell us a bit about what you're trying to do?
Yes, we're trying to expand to the back. We have a family, it's growing, we have one bathroom in there. We've been trying to do this for a couple of years, and just try to get this expedited. Unfortunately, it's taken a lot longer than we anticipated. And we waited so long to allow cat literally dies during that period, we're trying to get them a sunroom, which unfortunately, I'm not trying to make that as an excuse. I know, I'm not, I'm not a planning guy, I'm a manager, so this is something that I, my wife and I, we cherish for many year being in Millway, having raised a family over here. We really enjoy living over here. And we're planning to stay here for a very, very, very long time. And this is one of those goal that we want to achieve. And so that way, the family will have a comfortable place to live. We'll get another cat soon, so that way the sunroom will be, have a perfect companion room right over there. And right now, it's just kind of challenging for us using one bathroom in the house. The only way we could expand is going to the back, and the setback is important for us, because originally, when we started this project, the setback in the back, it was very challenging. It's like 20, it was like 22 square feet, I can't remember, exactly, 22 feet in length. The setback requires a six-feet offset. So at the end of the day, you're looking back there, you're having a six, six to eight foot left over and build a little, I don't even know what that is called, you can call it an attic, this doesn't make any sense to us. So hence the reason why we're asking for the setback exception to that conversation, because when you see from the outside, you, or you can, you don't see anything in the back there. There's no, it's not logical to have a setback, because we kind of look around the neighborhood and looking around, say, why, why is it necessary for a setback? Hence the reason we're asking for the exception, so that way we can kind of basically just expand toward the back. As an addition, you cannot see any interference from the back when you're staying in front of the street view. So we're just trying to keep it as simple, as simplified as possible, so that way, we can have an expansion down there and expand the bedroom along with another bathroom. That's really, that's really our going intention at the end of the day.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for him?
I have a quick question. So have you thought of putting an inside stairway to go from the upstairs to the downstairs? I mean, it seems very inconvenient.
We, we don't have that issue, to be honest with you, because we're looking at it as more like a playhouse. We're not looking forward to put a hole in the middle of the house and kind of swirl down there. I mean, the house, I mean, we could just walk around, in the back, there's a, there's an entrance door over there, we can go through it easily.
But that's only the downstairs?
That is correct. So even, even currently, there's, there's no stairway.
So you're going to have like two units there, then?
Technically speaking, if you look at it that way, yes.
So if that's the case, would that be considered an ADU if he's going to have two units?
Why would it be an ADU? Do they not need a kitchen?
The first floor does not have a kitchen, so it's not, it's not considered an ADU. And staff works, when they work with the applicant, so they come to the counter, they clearly have to identify on the plans if they're proposing an attached accessory dwelling unit, or an interior dwelling unit, or a detached accessory dwelling unit. It has to be noted on the plans, and it's actually a separate ministerial process. It's through the building department where that's approved. And in this case, this project was, this was submitted to us as, as an addition, it does not include a kitchenette.
Right.
So it's not, it's not an ADU, based on the plans that were, were reviewed.
But if the applicant is now saying it is going to be two units?
No, correct. I did not say it's a two unit. You implied that it's a two unit, that's why.
And you agreed?
Well, I didn't, I did not technically agree to that. I'm just, based on your interpretation, having a stairwell down there, I mean, I was, I was just deferring to the question you're asking me.
The one thing I would note is that in your existing floor plan, you have laundry on your main floor. And in this one now, you have laundry in that lower room.
Sunroom.
So you have laundry going in the sunroom?
Well, that's the plan, that's the plan, we're going to relocate it over there. So, I mean, right now, what we have is a tiny little space, probably is about 20 square feet, tiny upstairs, it's ridiculous, and we're trying to shift the space over there.
So your plan is to locate the laundry also in the sunroom upstairs?
Downstairs.
Downstairs. So that's what I'm saying, is if you have it downstairs, then if you're doing laundry, you need to go outside.
It's okay, it's no big deal for us to do that. I mean, it's dedicated space down there. We're not looking to do the laundry on, on the inside of the house, we're going to move it outside, below the sunroom, that's, it's going to be consolidated over there. Because it's just walking space for us, it's less than 30 seconds for us to get out of the house, move over there. I, I'm not, I'm trying to say is, it doesn't inconvenience us having the laundry room at a separate place, whether inside the house, that's all I'm trying to say.
Yes, sir.
The guest room that you're building on the first floor, it's a guest bedroom, but it's a pretty good sized room. I mean, it's 22 and, 22 feet and three inches long, 16 foot, 16 foot long, 22 and feet and three inches wide, it's a pretty good sized room, with a dedicated bath. I would imagine that you propose that L D R Y, it really is supposed to be a closet, is that what you meant?
Are you talking about the first floor, this, the bottom?
Talking about A1.1.
Yeah.
The space that is next to the bathroom, it says L D R Y. I mistaken it, I thought you meant laundry, but it looks like it's a closet.
You're talking about the expansion on the, on the back, is that what you're talking about? I can't, I can't see very clearly, unfortunately.
The expansions on the back, on downstairs on the first floor.
Okay, that's, that's going to be a guest room, basically, it's a family, family room slash guest room.
We suspect the architect mislabeled what is the closet as a laundry room. So right now, the plans look like there's two laundry rooms.
Oh, it looks like there's two laundry rooms.
There's a mislabeling, we think, but the architect's not here to confirm, but that's probably a closet, not the laundry room.
That is, that, I believe that's correct, it's closet, not a laundry.
Right next to the bathroom, in the guest room downstairs?
Yes, I believe so, yes.
Now, there's another thing, is that the existing unconditioned spa, existing unconditioned basement, the space right next to the laundry room, when you walk outside a laundry, the real laundry room, you walk outside, there is an existing unconditioned basement that has an eight-foot-high ceiling space. Did we count in the FAR? Sam? The space where the furnace is located.
So the, there's a, the, for crawl space, for space there, there's a deduction. For, basically, it has to be five feet, vertical feet or more before it's counted.
So it's eight.
So it's... Okay, I'm looking at the proposed. So for basement areas, they're counted by multiplying the horizontal floor area by the average height of the area, determined by the height of the finished floor above to the adjacent exterior finished grade, and dividing by eight. So that's how that's calculated.
So my question to you is, do we, do we not count as an FAR?
The way it was calculated, if you go to Plan Sheet A 1.2, and you go to HH on the lower floor plan...
Yes?
Or it should say GG, right? It's crawl space, lower floor plan. So that space was calculated at 129.76. That was the square footage that was calculated for that area. So they, they calculated the full area in their calculations.
So they already counted that space?
It's already counted, yes, in the FAR.
So the question for the applicant is that, did you, did you not have any intent of using that space in the future?
The answer's no.
The answer's no. Okay. I mean, I guess what we're trying to say here is that if there is an intent, and if there's a big if...
There's, there's no intent. That place is all garbage in there.
You're not listening to my question yet, Mr. Fang. If there is an intent ever, right, to use the downstairs guest bedroom as some sort of a secondary unit, Airbnb, whatever that might be, right, it is highly encouraged that you do the right thing to apply it as an ADU, and legally put in a kitchenette in there, because it's legal. You could do it. I mean, it is within our municipal code and the state code for you to have an ADU. It's legal.
I understand that.
Okay. So I just want to make sure that, you know, we communicate it to every single one of the applicant, because when it looks like to me, and I read many plans, and it looks like it's an isolated, separate unit, right, it's with a separate entrance, and there's simply, there's no intent of connecting this particular living space with the living space upstairs. So it's going to remain as a complete independent space with a separate entrance, sight unseen, for example, right? So, you know, when I'm looking at something like this, it looks awfully like an ADU that is not being counted as an ADU. So it is, it is, my recommendation is also, I would imagine, the recommendation of the commission, that if there is an intent to use it as such, make sure you apply a permit to get an ADU. About it. Thank you.
I have a question of staff. So what is the process if he were to change it? I mean, it would really behoove him, since they are legal now, that he get an ADU permit? It would make a lot more sense. Is it very complicated?
Yeah. I think, one, it's entirely their choice. If they choose to create an accessory dwelling unit, then they have a process that's afforded to them, which is, it's fully ministerial, I think, as Sam said earlier. They'd have to come in, show us the building plans and floor plans, show that they'd meet all the legal requirements to meet the definition of an ADU, and be able to get a building permit in that manner. You know, same goes for the crawl space, too. If there, if there's ever an intent to use that in a different fashion, then they would need to be legally permitted. And then we'd also have to take a look and see if it made any impact to this approval if, if one were given, the design review permit, such that that would have to come back before the planning commission. Now, I can say that most things, if they're just done internally, would not come back through the DR, through the design review permit process. So again, it's, it's their choice. If they choose to do an ADU, they'd have to prepare building plans and come in and get the requisite building permit.
So it would be very easy?
I think he's stated clearly, he doesn't want one right now. He's good. And I think we've told him, I think we're good now.
That is correct. Thank you. Yeah.
So a couple of comments also. First of all, I'm excited for your project, hope it goes well, and hopefully can find something satisfactory that will satisfy the codes. Some of the things that we're looking for and the suggestions we're recommending will improve the project and to make sure that you have an enjoyable home that's, you know, designed, well-designed. One question I have for you is for the upper floor, I see there's one entry on the front entrance. Is there another entrance or exit on that floor?
On the front, front level, there's only one main door, in the front, the very front.
Okay, so there's no, do you have a, you had a sliding door in the back with a deck?
Correct.
Now you're replacing that with a bay window. You extended it out and now you have a bay window. Okay. So that may be a concern that you may think about, I'm not sure, I'll have to check with the city code, but, you know, typically for a house this large, you would have more than one exit in case of fire, emergency, or earthquake, and you need to evacuate that...
Well, I was told by the architect, we can always add a little bit of egress to the end of the house over there, I mean, even it to be, just to satisfy, satisfy that requirement at the very end. I mean, that's, that could be easily done.
Second comment I had was that, similar to what Commissioner Fang mentioned, that the extension of the house will connect to the garage, so that it will kind of enclose that driveway. And there would be limited access. Is there any access at all to the back of the house from the left side of the house?
Actually, there, there's a little bit of a crossway from the west, the west side of the house. There, there actually, there is with the outer 639 neighbor, you could get access through there. There's, there's another, sort of like a, I want to say about five or six feet could go on the way hand side, not the left. If the left side couldn't, couldn't get in there, you could get in from the way hand side, actually.
That was striking to me also, I guess Mr. Commissioner Fang has a different perspective on it, but my perspective was that on that side of the house, it's a lot of pavement, you're going to have most likely a downspout, a lot of rain running off, and you probably experienced it before with the water on that side of the house and the drainage. By enclosing that area, you know, we need to think about proper drainage, so it doesn't become a nuisance, and you have a lot of water piling off from the house, down the downspouts, down the driveway, down the slope, and then piling up there, either going into the garage or going...
It really doesn't change anything that's already pre-existing. I mean, it's, we're not adding, we're not blocking any kind of spout or drainage currently, I mean, as it, as it stands right now, everything, it kind of meander around the garage, to the neighbor, kind of pass the garage to the left, and then all the water go into the back, there's a big, big drainage over there, all the, all the water funnel through there. That's how it is currently set up already.
Exactly. So we're trying to think about how to improve it and make it not a nuisance. If it's going on to the neighboring property, then that can be considered a nuisance. And you might think about, you know, you have a shot to fix that, or correct that, or add some drainage, and to address that issue, not only for the access issue, but also for drainage issue. So these are just two comments.
Well, I understand that, but as far as I can tell you, based on my experience over there, we, I lived there for, I think it was like 10 years, I guess, something like that. I have never had a single episode or issue with any kind of drainage issue from, from what I've seen so far. So I appreciate your concern.
Right, but again, this will, yeah, may create additional issues.
I have one more question. Also of staff, doesn't a house have to have a back door and a front door?
It needs to have the requisite ingress and egress in accordance with what the, the building code will require.
Is there one here now?
Well, they have the front entrance, and then they have, I'll have to look to see if there's a second, secondary exit.
Yes.
I said I'll have to look to see if there's a secondary exit, and so it may be that they do have to consider perhaps opening that back wall down to the stairwell if that, if that works.
And how do they get downstairs?
Well, again, that is something that, if any change is required during the building permit, plan check process, then we'll have to address that.
I would tend to think that the plan should show that upfront. I have a hard time approving something that we do not see, a back entrance, am I missing it?
So the, the building department reviewed the plans, and that, that was not one of their comments. So what they, did you need to meet all building code requirements as far as entrances and exits and egress? And they, they did not have a comment requiring that.
If I may, I believe there's a certain niche, certain standard in terms of the traveling distance from the farthest point of the house to where the entrance would be, it would be a file code requirement. For single-family homes such as this, it's, it's usually very difficult to exceed that limit. I assume the building is not sprinkled, right?
No, sir.
And it doesn't intend to be sprinkled?
That's correct.
Okay. So they have a certain set of requirement in terms of number of feet that they have to travel within in order from any point in the house... to travel within in order, from any point in the house, to go to the front entrance, in this case, which is the only egress, fire egress. But that would probably be something that comes up in the plan check.
Right. And I guess that's the point I would stress as well. I mean, again, and I understand your comment, for sure. You know, the notion of tonight's permit is for the design and look and feel of the actual home, but that's not the end of the process. They do need to go through that formal plan check process. If they're not meeting the building code, then they'll certainly have to make that alteration.
And it's already been through a review, correct?
That's correct. So that, in our process, during the initial lead-up to the design review permit process, we route the plans, all the different departments, to take a look at them. And so sometimes, some of those comments are a little bit more on the preliminary side, but certainly, that is to inform how they're doing the design, so there aren't any huge red flags of something that they're doing that wouldn't, or couldn't be permitted. But then there's always a secondary permit process that is much more labor-intensive in terms of full compliance, when they show all their structural, their mechanical, their electrical, their plumbing plans, which are, you know, where you don't have those before you, because there's more of a review that happens in the second stage after the design review permit.
Okay. One other question, because on the zoning compliance, where it says, the rear yard opens space, it says 1,000 is required, and existing is 3,553, but they're moving this house back, so there's going to be less, isn't there?
They have not moved to the one-third of the rear of the lot.
Yeah. They're eating up an earlier part of the yard, not the rear rear yard. They're not going to the back back. The rear one-third.
They have not extended into the rear one-third of the lot.
They've gone back, but not that far back.
Any other questions for the applicant?
I know it's a big lot.
Any other questions for the applicant?
You're done?
I have, but I guess we're not in, we haven't gone through, we're not in discussion yet, right? Okay.
Any more questions for him, right now? Okay. Thank you, sir. We might have more questions for you later.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Public comment. Does anybody have anything that they'd like to say on this? Any speaker slips? Nobody? Okay, that's closed. So now we can have a discussion? Would like to kick it off.
I'm sorry. I actually do have questions of the applicant, but maybe now is good, too. So, sorry, if you, sir, if you can come back up. Thank you.
Come back.
Because I wasn't sure if it's a question, or if it's more of a discussion kind of type thing, so that's why I withheld. What is in the very back of the property, right now?
It's just a backyard with a lot of soil in the back there.
Okay. And you don't plan to ever access that from inside the house?
Well, right now, we have a, we go through the back door, the side door, to get into the back. That's how we get back there. But I, we rarely go to the back.
Rarely go there anyway, so you're just thinking that you don't need access to it at all, from the inside of the house?
No. The answer is no. I mean, if we go back there, we just go walk around the building and just get there. I mean, we don't, that's the intention.
So you would go out the front door, go to the right, and then go back?
Correct.
Okay. Have you considered maybe having, and I'm sorry, I get stuck on laundry because I hate laundry, and just the thought of going out your front door, walking around the whole building to the side to get to the laundry, and if it's raining, or windy, or both, that's really a pain. So just as a, I'm just wondering if you ever considered maybe having off the sunroom, some stairs heading down, down the side of the building?
That's, you're absolutely brilliant on that, Commissioner. That's exactly, that's also potentially is an egress for SSW, too.
Exactly. So that would solve the egress problem, not having more than one egress at this point, but also, I mean, which maybe not as big of an issue, but I'm just thinking if you can go from the sunroom down the side, and it'll go straight to your laundry room, and then have a cover or something. So have you, but you didn't consider that before?
I did. I did consider it. That was during our discussion with the architect.
Okay.
Then, how does he get inside?
The laundry room?
Through that apartment? Through the...
No, the laundry room has a separate door from to the outside, on the side of the house. So if you go to A 1.1, oh, that's where it's at, right there, you see this, on the right-hand side, there's a sunroom bumping out, and then if you had stairs going from there straight down, and then the laundry room entrance is right there. So that would be much shorter. And, you know, I, I just think that while you're doing all this work, it just makes sense to make a design that will make sense, and just thinking about, you know, maybe you're fine with doing that, but in the future, if you ever down the line, you know, want to pass it on to your children, or sell it, or whatever you want to do, it may not, it might, that might really be a hindrance, because it's, the way it's designed right now, you know, there's no easy way to go. And if you're building the sunroom to, you know, new anyway, I'm just thinking that might, this might be the right time to add something like that. And that's just my, as a suggestion, or I don't know how that would work, but I just think, again, going out your front door, walking around the whole building to get to your laundry room, doesn't make sense functionally.
That's a great idea. I appreciate that. And, again, you know, part of the reason, as I shared with the commissioner earlier, we have two cats, and unfortunately, they passed away, and back then, we didn't thought about having a stair down there, because we don't want them to run around and get, you know, high from us, and we couldn't find them, you know, with the pets. So now that they, they kind of passed, I know, it's a sentimental conversation for me. I mean, it's just something that I, that we treasure that, and we kind of move on and pass that stage right now. So that option is clearly, we can look into it.
Any other questions for him right now? Not right now? Okay. You can sit down again for now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
So, I guess I'll kick it off. So if I may start, then if the applicant is open to doing something like that, how would that be handled, about going from the sunroom and maybe taking some stairs down to the laundry room? Is that something that would, you can handle, just at the staff level as an addition?
Yeah. I mean, I think you could certainly make that as a suggestion that we can carry forward to the building staff. Alternatively, if you wanted to craft, you know, a condition that kind of sets forth that the applicant shall explore a secondary exit and stairwell from the sunroom, you know, if it's deemed possible, and there's some concurrence, then that's something that you could do as well.
Okay. I mean, personally, I feel like that would make it a little better functional, and then you would have access to the downstairs room as well, better access there. So that's just a personal, I don't know how the other commissioners are going with that. I'm fine with the easement exception, the setback exceptions, which are part of it, so I have no problem with that, because it's toward the back of the building. And then, with regard to the sewer easement, I personally would like to see a special condition to just, I know it's been through Building, Public Works, but, you know, there's a lot that they're reviewing, and so I would like to actually, I think it would be worth having a special condition in there, just to flag it and make sure that that is checked, double-checked. Beyond that, I'm okay, I'm okay with the colors as they, as they look like, and I agree with Commissioner Quigg about the color doesn't quite match the tiles, but I'm okay with that as well, and the design overall.
Maybe we can list, maybe we should list that the color on the color chart on the building is not reflective of the color swatches.
But are the swatches and the names of the paint colors what we go by? Is that in the description of the project? Is that what we're going by, not the printers that can't print, right? I mean, it's the printer, it's a printer problem, more than anything. Our printers can't match paint colors. It's a difficult thing. I know it's way off this time, it's not even, it doesn't even look blue, but printers, just we can't trust, you know, any kind of printer in our offices to come up with the color, so you've got to go with the paint swatches.
So the rest of the house is going to all be the same color, correct? The back and...
The blue color.
Yes, that's my understanding. I would, I'd like to have the applicant answer that question, as far as the exterior colors.
What is the question again, please?
The question is the exterior colors that are shown on the material board. They look different than what's the existing front exterior of the color of the house, and staffs...
Sorry, can I explain?
Oh, okay.
Just show them.
The house is going to be this color, right? This doesn't look like that. But that's, yeah, this is what's, this is the...
That is correct. That is correct, yes.
And the whole house is going to be that color?
It's going to be the pretty blue color, just like it is now.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
So again, for the discussion portion with the staff question, when would this, what triggers the definition of a separate unit? If there's two entrances to a structure, and there's no interconnection between the units, when is it considered two units versus one unit?
So the answer to that question is if there's a second kitchen. The second kitchen indicates that it's a second unit, and that, you know, previously, when it was in a single-family R1, that wouldn't be permitted, but now with the state law for accessory dwelling units, the applicant would need to identify on the plans that they're creating an attached accessory dwelling unit, you know, with a kitchen, and the requirements for that are that it be no more than 50% of the existing square footage of the existing home. So that's the requirement for an attached ADU. Then if I could just piggyback on that, I mean, I understand the conversation about the lack of the internal connection between the first and second floor, but that in and of itself does not define what is a dwelling unit. It is California after all. If people want to access it separately through the outdoors, they're able to do that. The definition really of a dwelling unit is what Sam was saying, is when it has a minimum of one kitchen, bathroom facilities, and sleeping quarters. So absent the kitchen, it does not qualify as a dwelling unit.
Thank you.
Yeah, I do understand that. Thank you, Director, for that clarification, but I think, you know, in some way, during our planning code and our, in our design review process, we should also have some sort of a condition in there, not, let me rephrase, not condition, but, but rather, as part of our planning code, when we're looking at and reviewing a project such as this, when you see two living spaces that has simply no spatial connection, no physical spatial connection between the two, some consideration had to be put in, and that probably had to be codified somewhere, you know, instead of, you know, for the purpose of this particular meeting and this particular approval process, that when two living spaces have no physical spatial connection, some consideration had to take place as to the intent of those, of those living spaces.
I disagree. I don't think intent has any business here. Families can live their lives the way they want. There are many houses on this planet that don't have a connection from the front to the back. You've got to go outside to get to the laundry room, because it's in the garage and all that. Intent has nothing to do with what we do. Or future intent. I mean, he's clearly stated in this case, he doesn't want an ADU. He's not trying to build one, he's not trying to do something on the side. He doesn't want one. Is there potential one for there in the future? Absolutely. Could he change his mind? Yes. Can a future owner do something? Yes. But intent in our code, I don't think has a place. Anybody else?
I would agree if it is the laundry room, but if it's the actual living space, I would disagree.
Mm-hmm. Go ahead.
We are not going to see, like, the corrected, we're just going to make it a condition that the zoning compliance descriptions all be corrected. We're not going to see that again.
My, my suggestion would be that we, internally, and at the staff level, we'd make those corrections. We'd be happy to bring that back, so the commission can see how the corrections were made. And furthermore, through the plan check process, and I think, you know, I think we're learning a little bit here tonight, once we know what the final plans are going to look like, if we, if we know that there are known changes, I'd volunteer bringing those plans back, so we could just, as a sort of a test case, see how things finalize. And then, just one more comment, too. I respect both commissioners' comments on the internal coordination issue between the space, and at the end of the day, that does really get down to sort of a policy call. So in the future, when we do start to look at, you know, zoning code updates, if that's something that we want to consider, we could have a policy conversation about that, air it out, and then if we wanted to have something that governs or doesn't govern, whichever way, wherever we go, then we'd go ahead and effectuate that through code. So I do agree, there are some improvements that are needed in the zoning code.
Back to what you said, the first half of what you said, are you saying we'll come back for another approval? Or are you just going to show us what you did and just say, see, we did it, and doesn't, you know, it all got fixed? Okay, that's fine.
I think that in our day and age, you know, we still, property owners' rights and the neighboring rights, and in this day of Airbnb, what's our restriction or our limit? Do we have, you know, the house with four separate units, four separate entrances, three separate entrances? It can turn into a hotel. We've had those complaints a lot with neighbors already. So we need to look out the interest, after the interest of the neighborhood, and respect the zoning, which is on this R1. You know, it's a judgment call, but, you know, these are the issues that we face today, and we have to address those issues. We don't want people in the neighborhoods in our community thinking we're just letting everything slide by unnoticed.
Right.
Given that, is it possible to make a motion with a condition, like, subject to staff review, to ensure that second entrance exit is not required, something like that?
I don't think a secondary exit is really required in this case. If it is, it would be by building code, and they will be mandated at that point. I don't think we need to mandate it from a design review perspective on a secondary egress. You know, in terms of the overall design itself, I'm looking at the setback exception that they're seeking. I don't have a big problem with it, given that, you know, you cannot really see it from the front. You know, it's, it really doesn't change much of the outlook of the property, so I find that relatively acceptable. I would make a motion to approve the design review permit to allow a two-story rear horizontal addition to an existing two-story residence and setback exemptions to allow less than the minimum required second-floor setback located in the single-family home, I want zoning district for property 635 Santa Barbara Avenue.
And I did mention two special conditions that I would like to see. I don't know if the other commissioners are, how they feel about that. So one has to do with exploring the possibility of maybe doing the sunroom, you know, it doesn't, it's not required, but they can explore that possibility, and it sounded like they're open to it. So if we put in a special condition, that'll give them that opportunity to do it, too, if they choose to, and if it's not feasible, they won't. So that was first, and then...
How would you word that language?
Yeah. I would leave it to the staff to word, to shell.
It's an odd, isn't it an odd thing to call it a condition, but they don't have to do it as part of the condition? So it's kind of a...
The condition would be, shall explore the possibility and...
It's sort of a friendly acknowledgement of an issue. We can certainly craft language that would not be binding, however, if they're agreement, then, but we can, we craft it as such and bring back the resolution, because we're not going to craft it here tonight. So we'd bring back the resolution with that amended language. You can see it.
For that particular part, I would lean more towards leading it up to the director at the staff level, the decision.
That's fine.
So can they go back, so if this is approved as it is, and then later they come back and say, oh, actually, we do want the stairs there, then can that be just ministerial approval?
Yes.
Okay, then I'm good with that. I just wanted to make sure. And then, the other was regarding the sewer easement to, so not worried about that special condition, but the sewer easement, to have approval from Public Works, or whoever, the city, or in agreement with the city or something.
Yeah, I think the concerning part of that would be to completely close off the vehicular connection through the backyard, to be able to maintain that public utility easement. So that would be a bit of a concern. I understand that there's a possibility of, you know, going through those, beg, equipment through a different neighboring property, assuming there's no fence...
And then the other was regarding the sewer easement to, so not worried about that special condition, but the sewer easement, to have approval from Public Works or whoever, the city, or in agreement with the city or something.
Yeah, I think the concerning part of that would be to completely close off the vehicular connection through the backyard to be able to maintain that public utility easement. So that would be a bit of a concern. I understand that there's a possibility of, you know, going through those, getting equipment through a different neighboring property, assuming there's no feds involved. I don't know if there was any of those involved. But that would be the concern in terms of the costs associated with not being able to get the equipment back there and still have to surface those public utility easements.
So I don't know if we have a second yet, but do we understand the motion?
So we're adding the special condition for that?
For the easement.
That's correct. Right. So it would be conditioned upon obtaining approval from Public Works.
Correct.
Okay, then I'll second that.
All right. Your votes?
I did.
Everybody's done? Okay. And it passes four to one. There is a 10-day right of appeal. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
All righty. Where's my agenda? Number two is 316 Juanita Avenue. A design review permit to allow a second-story addition to a single-family residence and a setback exemption request to allow less than the minimum required second-floor setbacks of a single-family residence in the single residential zoning district. This is continued from March 18th of this year. Hi again, Sam.
Commissioners, good evening. This is the project located at 316 Juanita Avenue, between Santa Susana Avenue and Cypress Avenue in the Cappuccino subdivision within the northeast area of Millbrae. The property is a 12,772-square-foot interior lot, single-family residential, R1-zone residence with an existing single-car attached garage. It's the location of the front of the house. Little bit of information on the background of this project. It was continued from the Planning Commission hearing on March 18th for redesign to address setbacks and in the intent of having a more symmetrical design. The applicant did revise the design to partially meet the setback on the west side for more symmetrical design of the second floor and integrate with the first floor. The existing residence is a single-story home with entry porch, single-car garage, and open kitchen to a front living room with fireplace and kitchen nook, four bedrooms with closets, two bathrooms, one half bathroom, and two uncovered side decks with stairs to the side yard. The rear two bedrooms, two bathrooms, and two closets adjacent to the rear living room and kitchen is part of an existing 710-square-foot attached accessory dwelling unit approved already under a separate building permit B-1805-031 and is not part of this project. No changes are proposed for the existing front lawn area and plantings. A permeable paver surface parking space will be added on the side of the driveway to provide the two parking spaces required for the single-family residential home. There's currently an existing single-car garage. The roof is a 512 roof pitch, and the new second-story roof will be a 512 and 312 roof pitch combination. There are six adjacent neighbors who support the project. Zero are opposed. The project meets the development standards with the exception of the second-floor setback exceptions. The second-floor setback exception is 25 linear feet on the east elevation and 11 feet 7 inches, linear feet on the west elevation at the center of the building. The project details are on page four of the staff report. This is the proposed new first floor, which is located in this area here of the first floor of the building. And this is the proposed floor plan for the second floor, which is the crosshatched area. The bubbled green sections are the setback exceptions. Four feet are required on this side of the building. And the applicant is building the second-story flush with the wall below for 25 linear feet. On the opposite side, there's still a setback exception requested for this small portion of the second story, which is 11 feet 7 inches. And the setback required here is four feet. And then the applicant modified their plan, whereas before they were doing the second-floor addition flush along the first floor here, they've set it back five feet. This is the floor plan for the second-floor addition. Includes the master bedroom, suite room in the back, a bedroom with closet, closet in the front, and the bathroom here for this bedroom. And then an office space they're calling here with a stairway down to the first floor. Again, this is just another slide, clearly sort of shows how the design integrates with the existing building. The yellow highlighted area is the portion of the required setbacks. And then the, you know, the yellow is where they're proposing the setback exceptions. And here, they're actually providing a five-foot setback. This is the existing west elevation, the new west elevation. This is the existing east elevation. And this is the proposed east elevation. You can see here the shape of the second-story addition and this portion here where they're requesting the setback exception. These are the existing front elevation, existing south elevation, the rear. So I have here, in this slide, you're looking at the previous March 18th design for the second story. And you can see that the applicant was proposing setback exceptions on both sides where the walls would be flushed with the first floor. And there was this discussion by the Planning Commission and the commissioners, a desire to see a more symmetrical design and have the applicant attempt to provide some setbacks to accomplish this. And so the proposed front and rear elevations, this is what the revised design indicates. So now there is the five-foot setback on this side for the second-story addition. And then you have the existing shape or form, the bulk of mass of the existing single-car garage here. And then the setback, and then the location setback exception here where the building, the second story is flushed at the rear with the first floor at the rear. This is the location of the south elevation. So the Planning Commission is tasked with looking at the findings for design review from the municipal code in section 10.05, point 2500, findings A through D, and then the setback exception findings, findings one and two of the municipal code, which are outlined in the staff report. Staff is recommending approval of the design review permit to allow a second-story addition to a single-family residence and a setback exception request to allow less than the minimum required second-floor setbacks of a single-family residence in the single-family R1 zoning district. Based on the redesign, staff feels that the applicant was able to accomplish a more symmetrical design, and staff is recommending approval. I'm available for answering questions, and I believe the applicant is here also to answer questions.
Do you have any questions for Sam right now? Not right now? Okay, is the applicant here? Thank you. Come on up.
I'll put the plans up for you. Sure. You're welcome.
I'm Yang Chen, the designer for this project 316 Juanita Avenue. The homeowner really needed those space because they have new parents who comes in from China down here, and then they want to have more living space for them to, the kids also growing up and going to the middle school. So they want to have more privacy for the kids or something. So we decided to add the second story for them to increase the more even space and give them more independent study for the kids in the futures. So the whole concept of the design comes in, try to harmonize with the existing building style, the roof style and the floor plan. And then also because we're respecting the kids' privacy, we want every room have their individual bathroom, so they don't need to John Share with the bathroom for all the family members. That's why we come out this kind of designs.
Does anybody have more questions for him?
I understand that you presented the initial designs and just a few months ago, and then you revised the designs. Can you just take us through that change in thought process and the changes that you made to accommodate?
Yeah, we tried to accommodate all the council members' recommendations, and we do working all the things out, and hopefully this time, the council member will accept this approved design and approve this.
So the major change from the previous design was just that one side setback that before there was no side setback and you moved that?
Yeah. And right now, if you're looking at front of the buildings, it's more symmetry to the designs. And actually, even so, the labors, they have a second story, don't have all those features. But I think we try to build some samples for the labors, like stand-up ways for the labors to consider their future additions.
There you go.
Thank you.
No other questions for him?
Oh, sorry, through the chair. So I think what Commissioner Wong is asking is just to, kind of, what's the change that you made? Maybe if you can show on one of the layouts, just to show how you changed. I know that you shifted, basically you shifted it, but we're still looking at setback exceptions on both sides still. So maybe is that what you're asking, is to be able to see, like, so show where it is and then how much difference are we talking about in terms of the setback exception? Not that, it's still zero, but maybe the length of it is shorter, the setback exception compared to before, so?
I think Sam has been, have a very detailed explanation about the change of the designs on the second floor and mainly on the left-hand side setbacks. Before, we tried to save some construction cost and put the two bathrooms together. And right now, we relocate a bathroom for the master suite to put in facing the street sections. So in this way, we get all the five-feet setback. So we meet the commissioners' demands on that.
Thank you. And is that what you were looking for, Commissioner Wong?
Yeah, I reviewed the plans, and I remember the previous design, and I understand the changes. But it's just good to have your explanation, to have it on record, and the changes that you made so that, you know, our decision could be based on, you know, the full explanation of the changes that were made and satisfying as much of the code and design guidelines as possible, so.
Yeah, we tried to do as much as possible, and that is why we follow up the commissioners' recommendation from last time. So we, at least, we can get one side. Most of the area will satisfy with the code required. But we still have some limitations, so we still need to stay with the setback exemption request.
Okay, and if I may, sorry. The last time when we reviewed this, and this is why the minute, having them, it actually, March 18th minutes were actually better to what I was looking for. So we actually discussed this on March 18th, and one of the things that was mentioned was that we would like to see if it could be designed without the exceptions, without the setback exceptions. That was one of the comments that was made. Did you try that? Was, I mean, I guess you weren't successful, but did you try?
I tried it that already, but on the right-hand side, because the stair run away, the connection between the two floors, there's a certain kind of limitation on that. That's why on the right-hand side, I cannot get the separate requirement on that. That's why in the ground floor, you'll see there's a courtyard in the, facing the kitchen out. We have changed over there, make the stairway on that area connection, connect between the first floor and the second floor. In this way, then we can relocate a bathroom and make a second stories, the space is more comfortable to live on. So if you're looking for the ground floor area, we have some additions. We're saying post on the red before, we're facing out the kitchens. Before is the courtyard, we're enclosing the courtyard.
Okay, so you didn't actually have any other optional plans to try to reduce, to get rid of this setback exception?
If we both side get it, there are a couple of technical issues. The stair connection between the two floors will make the things is not workable. So that is the major issues. And also, if you get a more setback on the right-hand side, the second floor shows that when you're facing on a street and look at the buildings, is more, not like a symmetry way of the things. It will be just shifting on one side of the buildings. It's not good in architecture point, when you're looking for the designs and the elevation of the buildings. This is not the very good practice on that.
I understand that, and I think, and again, one of the comments at that time was, at the meeting, was we understand one side setback, but to have both sides, if it were possible at all to, I'm sorry, to eliminate or mitigate at least the second, it says southwest side of the building, so I'm going to go with the minutes. The second, so even in here, so, thank you, I meant to say that first, for designing it more symmetrically, because I like that better. But I'm just, at the same time, you know, again, that was a comment, because every time we do an exception, we're doing an exception again. And so one of the comments at that time was maybe one side made sense because it would be more even, but the other side, that I think that the sentiment was that there might be some room to be able to not have such a, not have so much of a setback exception. So...
Actually, this is what, because when we're doing the designs, I really would like to see the overall design impact and effect of the overall designs. But if ship both side, we get a setback, we made a setback requirement, the design comes out is not symmetry, a lot more elegant and more, not like the original design way of the house construction. That's why I will see, I would prefer to stay with one side setback requirement on the right-hand side. So stay with this design, and then I think the overall design will make the building more, in proportionally, more acceptable and more like original style of the house.
Through the chair, I'd suggest the applicant go to Plan Sheet A-3.1 on the screen. It gives you an idea of what the second-story addition would look like and then what the required setbacks. So on the top portion of the sheet there, this, there's, you'll see on the side, the regular seven-foot side setback. So staff requested that the applicant show where the setbacks are as required. Now, granted, the seven feet, that's what the code says, but there's a reduction factor. So in actuality, on the, on the top portion of that, the required setback is four feet because they're further than the, they're further than five feet at the ground story level to, from the property line. So if you imagine where there's, what it is showing right there, the setback would be, have to be four feet from the wall as shown in there for following that pattern. So that cuts the, that would cut the master bedroom, portion of the master bedroom. It would cut the, let's see, it would, it would cut, actually, it would cut the office space in half. And then it would also, as the applicant mentioned, the stairway would be impacted going down. And then on the, on the opposite side, which is the lower portion of the image there, the required setback at the darrow point where the master bedroom is, is a five-foot required setback. So that would cut a large portion of that master bedroom. And the applicant is showing a bathroom for the master bedroom there, so that would eliminate the bathroom. There'd be no bathroom for that master bedroom in order to comply with a setback. So the, what they've done is sort of... with a setback. So the what they've done is sort of address the the symmetrical issue, the design of it by having that that five-foot side setback on that one side and not on the other in order on the not on the other side in order to have a good flow as far as sort of in the bulk mass of like the master bedroom and the the office space and then the stairway. It would it would really sort of impact the the usage of the space if they were to to do the the full compliant compliance of setbacks. So staff felt that the way it was designed and it they were able to address that symmetry and still maintain the flow of that second story and the and the the use of those spaces for the office and the and the two bedrooms with the bathrooms.
So. What was the square footage total of the second story before?
Before the addition is eight hundred twenty something and right now is eight hundred thirty-two.
Eight hundred and twenty? And what is it now?
Eight hundred thirty-two.
How much?
Eight hundred thirty-two. So we we increase about fifteen feet.
So.
From the previous design.
So we've actually increased the square footage?
Yeah, but we still were in the design allowance limit.
Okay. I I'll save my comments.
Did any of that additional square footage add to any of the exceptions, any run of the exception?
No.
Okay.
We increased the size of the walling closet, but the walling closet we put facing the front side of the buildings.
What was the square footage? I mean, what was the FAR previously?
Any other questions for him right now? No? Okay, thank you for now. We might call you back up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any move on to public comment? Any speaker slips? Does anybody want to speak to this project? No? Okay, we'll close that public comment. Discussion?
If I may, staff, I'm looking at the northeast side of the setback exception that they're seeking. And I'm also looking at the regular on A3 dot one where they said the regular seven-foot side setback line. Why is it so further in? I mean, I would imagine that the seven-foot side setback line will begin to count from where the garage exterior wall would be. Wouldn't it? That's where the exterior wall is, right?
You're talking about the side by by the garage?
I'm talking about the, look at the bearing right, it's the northeast wall.
The northeast wall, okay.
Where the garage wall is, yes, the garage exterior wall. Shouldn't that be the beginning point where you count the exterior wall setback?
It's measured from the directly from the wall below. So the second story, wherever the second story wall or addition is being added, the setback for that second story is measured directly from the wall below.
Okay. I see. That's why they're zero at this point.
Yeah, right. And then just, you know, it is somewhat interesting because if you're looking at Sheet A31, which shows the hatch area of how the second, yeah. So what you have is on the bottom part of that drawing, forgive me on my directions, you have a portion of the house that is setback five feet from the floor below or a total of 12 feet from the side property line. And then the portion that's sitting above the existing master, that has a zero, even though it's along the same plane. So I just wanted to point that out. So on the same plane, one is setback five feet, another is setback zero.
And then on the southwest wall, they're two feet away from being in compliance? Is that correct, Sam?
So on the southwest wall, which side are we talking about here? So that is this on the bottom portion?
If you face the building, it's the left-hand wall.
Right. So that they're they're proposing they're they're going to have a five-foot setback. So there actually there's a there's a reduction factor on that because if you note there's a approximately seven feet from the property line. So for each additional foot over the five foot that you reduce it for a maximum of three-foot reduction. So they actually are providing a five-foot, it would be a five-foot requirement, a five-foot setback.
They have a requirement of five and then they're zero.
Right, right. And that's sort of as Mr. Meiser pointed out, the the portion next to the where the master, the new master bedroom would be, that portion is the is the setback exception request. Just that one portion. And then proceeding along the for the front, they are they are in compliance. They are providing the setback.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
I think the key figure that we should be looking at is A4.2 on the north front elevation facing the front of the house. And it was really clear, the previous discussions that we had was only a couple of months ago, that, you know, the intent of the second story setback was to break up the massing, allow light and more privacy for the neighboring properties. The right side of the property or the east side, it had all the appearances of having a setback because the garage line didn't wasn't really the house line that extended to the back. But from the front, it appears that there's a very lengthy setback from the east side. And on the previous plans, the east, the west side setback, there was no west side setback at all. And there was a lengthy discussion about having that setback and it is is it required and they're asking for an exception or because the neighboring property didn't have the setback at all. It's just a big flat wall, second story on the neighboring property. And discussion was about why is does this house need it if the neighboring house had a big second story, just no setback at all. And then there's a discussion about could it be done? Could it not be done? Is it easier to construct? It's easier to construct just a straight wall up. But it looks like Mr. Chen with this design, he made a lot of changes to really satisfy the intent of our residential guidelines and put in that setback. So it gives all the appearance of having that five-foot setback on the second story on the west east side and then also a west side and also the setback setback on both sides. Design, I think it looks great. I think it looks spectacular. It's modern design. It doesn't give match the older style of the neighboring house, but it does allow more light and a little bit more privacy from the neighboring house on the west side. I think the intent of having this kickback to Mr. Chen to redesign, I think it did met our original intent of having that setback included incorporated into this latest design. My two cents. Anybody?
I thought the whole purpose also of with the setbacks is to make it a little bit smaller on top because it's a large lot. But it is a very massive house when you start putting that on top of it. So I was hoping that with the setbacks, it would shrink it because we're talking about a top floor with eight hundred and thirty plus. That's a pretty big. It's almost like original houses in that whole neighborhood. So I still have a problem with the setbacks. And part of it is because the intent was to make it smaller. And I think if he did do all the setbacks, it would be a smaller second story.
However, I would like to point out that it does conform to our FAR requirements. And, you know, it is a large-sized lot, even though it does have one car garage, which is small for the size of a house. They're planning on parking. Looks like there's ample parking in the driveway for these three cars in front of that garage and including the garage probably be another these four cars parking there.
And and I somewhat agree with that comment. Generally, if a house was going to be this large, we would have and as much configuration is going on at the beginning, we could have requested two-car garage, which would have balanced the house a little bit better. Now you have and and the thing is that the lot is large, but what makes it so large is the depth and not the width. And so there's not a lot of space. It's not like Mills Estates where there's a lot of space in between. So I feel it's unbalanced with the one-car garage and that's why there's five of us here and we're all entitled to our own little reasons for things. And I feel that it is, I know the FAR is in line, but I feel it's incompatible with some of the other homes.
Waiting for me? Want to say something?
This is a tough one for me because I feel like I agree with everybody, which isn't doesn't make sense. But because I think, I mean, setback exception, the the thing that does make a difference is that the garage kind of juts out to the side. So when you look at it from the front, it's not right on top of the garage. And so it's the fact that it's a setback exception is because the house kind of veers in, right? And yeah, jogged in, whatever that term jogged in. So it juts inside or the garage juts out. And so when you're looking at it from the front, it I feel like maybe that's not too bad, the fact that it does need a setback exception. I am disappointed, though, because I feel like that was one of the things that was mentioned was, you know, can we try to mitigate that? And I would, I also agree with Commissioner Quigg about, you know, just that it feels like it's a really big house and a second floor for that space. And I would have liked to have seen it, you know, reduced a little and some of our comments from last time taken into account a little more. Having said that, it's the FAR, so I'm just thinking out loud, sorry. The FAR, it is within FAR. So I'm sorry, way below FAR, right. It's at 27%. So because it is a large lot, but it's 49 feet wide. So I'm sorry, I said almost nothing. But that's just what I'm, so I feel like I'm kind of torn about it because I think I can kind of see my way through being okay with the setback exception. I would have preferred that maybe they had taken into more account, so.
Yeah, I appreciate the fact that, I mean, I read over the notes as well, you know, the previous design was sort of have the second story all in one sided. It looks really unbalanced. But this case, it came back, even though it is still seeking a second door, second story exception, it looks a little bit better than it is last time. And I appreciate that effort there. You know, on the right-hand side of the property, it's it's quite far away from the exterior of the house when you look at from just the facade, right? So I'm relatively okay with that. Left-hand side, I would like to see it tuck in a little bit more if it's possible, right? That's why I ask and see if there's a possibility to to get that tucked in, maybe the applicant, if there's a any comment you can make about, see if there's on the left-hand side of the house, if we look at the front, is there a way you can tuck in maybe a feet or two? If you look at eight four dot two, right, where the elevation is?
It can go one feet or more, but the upstairs room will goes not so comfortable, a little bit smaller.
Right.
I tried to respond to Chris question about the second floor is too big. But if you're looking for the ground floor plan, the ground floor area, we have have about 2,300 square feet. And when you're the second floor, you only have 800 square feet is less than 40, is about 40% of the ground floor space. So this is more like a proportional way.
So so look, let's let's just sort of indulge me for a moment there, right, Mr. Chen? Looking at the master bedroom, it is a 18 by 15 and change. It's quarter, it's quarter scale. Where the other bedroom is 12 by 14 and change. So suppose you tuck it in by a foot on the left-hand side wall. The master, master suite can still encroach into that sort of a second-story lobby area, if you will. So you won't really lose much of the width on the second on the on the master bedroom. You might lose a little bit in the closet and the bathroom a little bit. You have to sort of make some kind of compromise. If you let me finish. So if you can just compromise that bathroom and the closet a little bit, tuck the second story on the left-hand side by a foot, right? Make it a little bit more balanced. Is that possible?
It will be possible, but the owner will prefer have this side kind of size of the master bedrooms.
My question is, is it possible?
Yeah.
Good.
If you're looking for the new designs of the house, all the new house designs, usually they will have a much bigger master bedrooms.
I know what they prefer, but I'm asking you, is it possible?
It all depends on owner's request, I could say. But this is the floor plan owner will definitely approve on that. So that's why I present this to you, to the commissioner.
Would you if you took it in by a foot?
No, my question is, on this side, we don't have too much setback issues. So.
You do have a setback exception that you're seeking.
The setback exception is on the other side, it's not on this side.
Both sides.
It's on both sides.
But just to be clear, on this side that we're talking about, the exception request is essentially only for the new bathroom and closet at the back portion, right? So the 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 new master bedroom.
Oh, good point. So that means the master doesn't even need to be setback any further.
That's correct.
Only the the secondary, the secondary bedroom in the back.
Correct.
So which is where the closet and where the bathroom is currently?
Yes.
If you can tuck that in by a foot, let's say, that bedroom lose one feet. The bedroom is 14 and a half. Can you live with 13 and a half?
If I don't need to come here, I can make a change and Sam can follow up on that. Because every time come here, takes us a long, long time on that very, very small changes.
I'm trying to save your secondary trip. Can you take it in by a foot?
Yeah, I can trip on down one feet on that section.
Okay, thank you very much. So.
Thank you.
We're looking for some compromises here and there, right? So, you know, that will tuck it in. But how many square feet are we losing there?
Ten feet.
Ten? Twelve. You think 12 feet?
Yeah.
So what would the second story be then? Total square foot wise?
That would be about 820.
What was the previous application?
It was 821.
Okay, so we're losing it by a feet. We have a smaller second story than we did before.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
You can change it.
Can you catch us up on what you just did?
I squeezed the second story by 12 feet. So now the second story is lower than what they previously had proposed. Instead of 821, now is 820. And you require less setback And you require less setback than you previously did because you tuck it in by a foot on the second story, on the rear portion of it, where the second bedroom is.
Yeah, I got.
You've still got 13 and a half-sized bedroom, which is still a very respectable, respectable bedroom size, by all standard.
That room is a little bit smaller, it's good.
By all standard.
Yeah.
Design many rooms, Mr. Chen. So, that's still a very good-sized bedroom.
Can you just speak more clear about which side you're talking about in terms of when you say tuck it in?
On the left-hand side, on the rear side of the suite.
Okay.
The bathroom and the closet move up one feet.
Move it in one foot. That doesn't change the easement, though? Easement section, okay. Setback exception. Okay, but that still doesn't change, there's still a need for a setback exception, right? Okay, so.
Less exception than before, and the second floor is now smaller than they previously had proposed.
Right, so the second floor is smaller, but I'm just saying, in terms of setback, it will still need a setback exception on that side.
Correct, you still need an exception, yes, but it's, yeah, less than.
I wasn't sure, we're trying to alleviate the, mitigate the setback.
Well, we alleviate the fact that we're having a bigger second story than we previously proposed.
I have a question of staff. I guess we're covered in the subject because it says, well, one is not going to have a setback now, one side, is that right?
So, both sides still have the need for the setback exception. So, what I think I was hearing is, on the.
Left side.
On the top of the drawing, right, we still, I understand there's no request for changes on that side, from the commission.
On the right-hand side?
Right.
Right, I didn't have any requests for.
Yeah, on the left-hand side, they're still, they're still seeking a zero-foot setback from the ground floor. So, what we were just talking about was the notion of having the area of the new bath and closet now stepping in one foot from the wall below. So, in effect, they still have a request for a three-foot exception.
Yeah, only for those 12-foot walls.
On one side, and how much is setback on the other side?
Zero.
Because how the building is being jogged in, right, a certain portion of it will have to have zero setback from the first floor because of those portions is being jogged in. I mean, it's a tough situation for this particular configuration, how the building is, it's sort of, it's wide, and it goes in, and it tucks in, and it tucks back out, right? So, there always going to be some portion of the addition that requires some sort of an exception, given how tucked in they were in the middle of it.
We're in discussion right now. I think it would have been good for you, Mr. Chen, to show the before drawings and then show the changes that you made to demonstrate the drastic changes that you've already undertaken to meet this setback requirement. And I think that this does meet that setback intent. It does appear to have that second-story inset from the sides. And if we pulled up those original drawings, you would see that it went from zero setback along the entire length of that wall to five feet in. And adding the additional one foot, I think, Mr. Fang, you already pushed that. So, that's why we're back here a second time, and you made that revision to these house drawings. I think that the one-foot additional inset is not worth the time or the change, the appearances from the current, the way it is right now to be worth all the time spent for revising the architectural drawings and the costs involved and aggravation for going.
And the delay.
And the delays, right. So, I mean, I'm all in favor for just approving this. It's the change in the, changes that were made met our original recommendations. The whole intent of the second-story setback, it appear, it has the appearances of meeting that, and architecturally and functionally, it appears to satisfy that. But just literally, like you mentioned, that there's always going to be a setback exception required for this house because of the change in the wall lengths and designs. But, that's not a defect. That's really, it appears to be a really nice funk, architectural appearance and design. So, it seems like our guidelines are made for the setback. If it was a straight wall having inset, it doesn't really account for these designs when we have a house made with this differing wall lengths and sizes and functions. But, you know, I'm all for just approving it with this revision that met our original request for modification.
Motion, maybe?
Yeah, okay, so I'll make a motion to approve of the house design review permit application for 316 Juanita Avenue with the proposed 116-square-foot ground floor renovation and 832-square-foot second-floor addition with the east elevation design at a zero setback. And west side also setback variance, as in the submission from the Planning Commission.
With the condition that the, on the second floor, where the rear bedroom is, we tuck it in by a foot on the southeast wall.
I think, thank you.
Southeast.
Wouldn't have that recommendation unless.
Southwest, excuse me.
Yeah. Say, I would say recommendation, but strong advisement, but not a requirement or condition for this approval. Unless the homeowner, we need to hear from the homeowner if they're willing to have that condition. Again, it would require another revision of the plans and drawings and architectural design changes.
They can just update the plan as, after the approval, if they get it.
That would be up to the agreement of the architects to do that. Does the homeowner and architect agree to that five-square-foot revision for the bathroom?
I think what he's saying is, that's a condition of approval, then.
That's the condition of the approval. I mean, they can choose to do what they like to do, but if that's what you.
I'm not recommending that as a condition for approval for this.
So, my question would be, what would that fix? That would just lower the, reduce the square footage of the place, right?
Reduce us to second story.
Right.
Right, because it used to be, what is it, 821?
Right, and then from.
And now it's 800 and.
832.
32, so you take it down by 12 feet, it's now 820, right? You tuck it in the second story a little bit, so it requires less setback as exception than it used to.
Yeah, I'm actually okay with it personally. Yeah, I don't think that's going to make that much of a difference because we're looking at it from the front mainly. So, personally, I don't know, again, whether the commissions feel that. I don't think that would change anything anyway, so, and, yeah, so.
What do you think, Commissioner Quigg?
I just feel the house is big for the lot, not the depth, just when you're coming down the street.
But on the second.
It's not going to make any difference.
But a size in the second story?
No, I really feel that when you're looking at these houses, and I'm now seeing some of the other ones in my area there, and they're done, and when you're coming down the street, it's just overwhelming. And on the back side also for the, because that lot, I think, has the gully in the back. But when you're looking at it from the other side, it's pretty massive. So, I feel that we're, maybe we need to make some changes going forward on exceptions, on side, because the homes now are being built to accommodate multi-generational ADU, so, you know, maybe in the future. But based on what we have right now, I feel it's incompatible to the neighborhood.
And I'm sorry, I know there's a motion, but I, can I? I meant to ask a question and I forgot. Is that okay? There is an ADU, I know that's not part of the discussion, but I was wondering, what is the parking requirement? Because right now, there's only one covered parking. We're going to have one pavement parking. And I think California guideline, I don't recall exactly what that would be, but there's an additional unit, and it's not so, so, so close to transit. I think that it would, so I'm just wondering, I mean, if you were to add in the ADU in terms of parking guidelines, I think it would actually take us up to possibly a third parking space requirement? Maybe not.
The state law doesn't require additional, like, parking garage for the ADU, but it does suggest that there be driveway space for that spot. And they have enough space in the driveway for that, for the ADU, but it doesn't require any additional parking.
Right, but in terms of square footage, if you're counting that as part of the building, wouldn't that take us over 35?
Isn't it over 9,000, what is it, over 4,000? We need an extra parking spot?
I just want to check. So, it's still within, even if you were to add it? I just wanted to check that because it does feel like it is going to be a bigger house, which is fine, and then you have an ADU, and then there's only one covered parking, and we're going to do pavement parking somewhere, and.
Well, there's 32 feet in the front.
The requirement is a two-car garage for a single-family home. They have that one-car garage and one surface space. So, they meet the requirements for a single-family residential, the two spaces, when a minimum two-car covered parking garage does not exist.
Okay, so I just wanted to check, so we're not adding in, again, what's the square? I'm going through square footage. I'm looking at total.
No, under our guidelines, it's going to be 3,476 square feet. So, the requirement would be a two-car, basically would be a two-car garage, but because it has an existing, non-conforming, single-car garage, and they're going to add, they would have to have at least two spaces. So, they have the one-car garage and then the one surface space, which is the two spaces required.
A lot of times, we have required tandem parking, so that there would be two covered.
Yes, in this case, the applicant is not touching the existing garage. There's no work being done at that garage. So, typically, like, if an applicant comes in and they're doing a single-story renovations, they're going to remove a part of the wall of the garage, then we would request that they add a tandem and upgrade the garages to the two-car garage parking, I mean, they could do tandem or horizontal. But in this case, the addition is a second-story addition of toward the back of the house, and they are, they're not touching the garage. So, we don't, staff does not require that they demolish and construct a new two-car garage if they're not going to be touching that existing single-car garage.
To address the commissioners, other commissioners' concerns, if you look at the very first sheet A 1.0, they do even call out that there is a proposed new front yard parking permeable surface only right there in the front of the driveway. And that area adjacent to it, to the right, there's, appears to be an equally sized space for parking, and in front of that, and both in front of the garage. So, it's possible, even looking at the picture in the inset on A 1.0, on the top-right picture, there's one car parked right in front of the garage. It can easily sit, fit several cars. How they get in and out with the cars parked in the driveway is another concern, but it does look like there's ample parking for this facility, for this home. Again, I'm recommending a motion to approve of this house at 316 Juanita, as is, given that they have revised their plans to meet the original concerns of our Planning Commission comments on 316 or 318, and addresses the side setbacks and that issue. There you go.
I'll second that.
Votes? Passes four to one, 10-day right of appeal, congratulations. Alrighty, next up is new business, I see none. Staff updates?
Thank you, Chair. A couple of announcements and updates. As I talked at the last meeting, we are working on increasing our staffing capacity, which I think is, in the long run, going to help with some of the efforts that we've been talking about. So, recently, I do want to announce that last week, we had an intern start with us, Jennifer Lim. She's a graduate of University of Oregon with a planning degree, so we're happy to have her onboard. And then, we also have a new planner, Nestor Guevara, starting on the 17th. Also, he has a master's degree from University of Oregon. I don't know what it was, but we were, we had a string of ducks, I guess, come to Millray, so. So, we're very happy to have both of them onboard. It's going to really help with our ability to process both the current planning projects as well as get into some of the longer-range projects that we've been talking about. So, in terms of the ADU, which we've been talking a lot about, as well as the telecommunications ordinance, both of those are fully underway. We have a nice inter-departmental team on the ADU ordinance. And so, we're going to have a proposed schedule very soon to share with you. So, perhaps at the next meeting, I can make an announcement about what that schedule looks like moving forward. In the meantime, there's a lot happening in the world of telecommunications and the 5G. We have been looking at some sample ordinances in other jurisdictions. We're a bit behind due to some of our staffing, but we do have a draft that's going off to the city attorney's office. And then, I'll have at the next meeting as well, the schedule for when that's coming forward. So, those are the two main things I wanted to tell you about in the world of zoning updates, as well as the staffing. And we will go back and get clarity on getting those minutes squared away. I know that's been a little bit of a struggle for us. We'll get that, we'll get that cleaned up and squared away. And with that, that's my update.
Thank you. Commission comments? Yep.
I think it looks really good. So, what I think, this is, we're going to get something like this for each project?
Right, yeah.
It's going to have all these pages, and what I do like about it is that on the same page, you have current and new because I find myself just going through pages and saying, now is this proposed or new? And by the time I get through four pages, will we still get the larger plans or will they all be the smaller?
No, no, that was just the template. You'll still have the larger plans. The idea is that the plans will look exactly like that template.
So, when people come in, you're going to say, and then everyone is going to have them the same way because now every plan that comes in is so different. Everything is in different places, and so, I think you did a huge amount of work. So, I want to thank you.
Yeah, no, that was all of our staff, Linda and Sam, and everybody's been looking at that, so that's, I think it's going to be a real big improvement. And we, you know, as it stands now, as you point out, the plans have been kind of all, you know, across the board. They've been different. Then they also give us a worksheet, and it's just been confusing for applicants, staff, and I know the commission, so we're just trying to clarify that.
All right, this, just to clarify, or for the record, this was some drawing guidelines distributed at the 56 Planning Commission meeting, and we talked about having. distributed at the 5, 6 Planning Commission meeting, and we talked about having commission comments due at the next commission meeting, which was canceled, so just, I would like to just request another week to give my comments or clean them up and give them to you.
Perfect.
Anything else? Any announcements?
Oh, can I comment?
Absolutely, comment away.
So, one, it would be nice to have a pipeline. I know it's hard, but just to kind of have an idea of, because it seems like there are a lot of projects coming, or hear rumors about them, different projects coming up. I know there's that whole issue of school districts, high school district staff housing in the, on the Mills campus, there's El Camino Real, there's, and general plan update, which I think we talked about before, you know, like a year ago, and I haven't heard anything. So I know there's a lot on staff's plate, but it would just be nice at some point, I think we used to actually have like an Excel sheet, this was years ago, but, and it doesn't have to be Excel, but just something where we had...
Yeah, I can address that through the chair. Staff did develop like a list of active development projects on our website, so if you go to our website, we now have a list there for active large development projects, and then a list of active residential design review permit projects. And so that list, I'm periodically updating it, I try to take a look at it once a week, and that gives you a snapshot of sort of the number of active projects that are under review currently, the residential design review projects. We have about 25, 26 now, I think we've got like three or four more the last couple of weeks. And then we're actively processing some, like six or seven larger development projects, and we're anticipating actually two more coming in, I believe, one or two more. So as those come in, as we receive them, and they become active projects, I'll add them to that list and post them up on the website, so we'll update the website.
Yeah, and I'd just add, that's sort of in the beta format right now, but what we are looking to do is expand that and have much more rich graphics, so people can kind of see what the preliminary sort of conceptual design looks like on some of the larger projects that Sam mentioned. And in the meantime, there is a full list of all the design review for a single-family home remodels and new construction, and if you want, we're certainly welcome to, we can add that to your packet if you'd like to have that list, or if you'd rather go to the website, either way.
I personally would like to, I mean, and it's not just the list, but I'm just saying even like how far down the pipe we're looking at. So, you know, if we have like 20 projects, obviously, we're not going to talk about 20 projects, but there might be some that are more close, that are getting close to, you know, maybe over the next couple of months or whatnot, so I would like to see it in the packet, I'm not sure if, and the other, just a comment, just a thought, and thank, sorry to keep picking on the minutes, but I think one of the things that I've been thinking about and would like to see is if a commissioner is dissenting, to make clear why they're dissenting, and then to have that in the minutes, and, or even have a discussion before, because I think it's super useful for me, just even when I come to the meeting, sometimes I come with a certain idea, and then these discussions are really helpful. And so sometimes I change my mind, like I come thinking, oh, this is slam dunk, and then somebody brings something up, and I'm like, yeah, and it gets me thinking, so I just feel like that's really valuable. And then even when we look back, if somebody says, what happened with that project, and then you go, well, and then to be able to look at the minutes and go, okay, this commissioner dissented based on that, and not that I'm going to count points or anything, but I'm just, it would be good to kind of go, okay, maybe that was, that was the right dissension at that time, you know, and I think that's really valuable, so just, again, it's a personal comment from me, but I really, when we look at projects that come back to us after, especially like if it's been a year or two, it's super helpful for me to go back to the minutes and go, okay, what was that objection at that time? Why did it not go through? You know, and I'd, I'd really like to have that kind of discussion first, and then even, you know, to keep a record of it, because I think it's very useful for us to learn.
Just, may I ask a question of staff? So like that Mills project that they're talking about, and I think that's what you alluded to at the beginning, that would never come to us, would it? Because it's on the school district property?
You know...
It's the city of Millray, isn't it?
Yeah, so at this point now, it's, you know, and I don't want to get, we haven't agendized this, so I can only speak really casually about it, but at this point now, it's a piece of property that the city owns, and we are looking to determine whether or not it would be declared a surplus property.
No, no, I'm not...
City owns, or the...
About the Mills High School.
Teacher housing.
The teacher, that's not our property.
The school district or city?
Well, I think they're, they may be related, right? So one is a conversation about whether or not the district wants to construct, you know, teacher...
On their own property.
And then the question is, where would that occur, right? And so...
Her question is, if it's on school district property, is it in our purview?
That, no.
No, that's the question. That was your question, right?
Right.
And why wouldn't it be? Because it's within the city of Millray.
Design review or anything would never...
It would be on school district property, and we have nothing to say about it.
That's under the state jurisdiction?
Correct.
I noticed that last week, they had a meeting...
Yeah.
To discuss that with the residents. Was the staff involved in that meeting, or?
I mean, that was a school district meeting. I know that there were city staff members that were there, but it was not our, it was not our meeting.
So it's not even within the city's jurisdiction, meaning the council wouldn't have anything to say about it either?
No.
Well, I mean, I think it's, I think it's a question of, you know, we're one community, and so at this point, if the school district is interested in pursuing teacher housing, where would that occur in the city? And then to what extent would the city have a hand in it? So, but that's all I can really, that's all I know about it at this point.
I'd recommend that they present, or someone do some research to see if there's been a successful project like that, that we can model or have a basis for making decisions to allow such a development, and what it would look like, and how it would work.
I don't think we have anything to say, it's not our property.
Yeah, they don't, they shouldn't be spending their time researching something that's not theirs, especially a project that doesn't even exist yet.
Exactly.
Well, obviously, they had a meeting, so they were talking about it, so...
Cappuccino, they built a whole big thing, and it didn't come before any city.
And I'm sorry for bringing it up, I know we're not supposed to discuss things, so I just brought it up as a pipeline thing, but...
I think it would be very helpful, because we're out in the community all the time, and, you know, people ask questions, and sometimes it works if we have some kind of inkling on what's going on, if it's available. If it's not available, certainly understand.
And the announcements?
Are we having a meeting in two weeks, is that?
Yes, yes, we will have a meeting on the 17th. We have one item that I know of for sure, that is a design review permit. It's also very likely that we'll have a final map for the gateway project, so it's the final subdivision map that's required to come before planning commission, and before it goes to the city council.
What is the date of the next meeting?
June 17th.
I will not be here.
Okay.
That it? We're adjourned.
Okay, I'm glad I brought my jacket, because I'm cold.
Firstly, Bill Dokte, who represents the very, stand up, Bill. And hold your recognition until I introduce all of them. First, Bill Dokte, and he really represents the very best of our medics. Secondly, Chino Sanchez. Doc, Doc, you got to stay up, Doc. Doc, stay up with Chino. Chino's here, by the way, with his marine veteran wife, Gilda. Next, Dennis Bustos, who reported to the company that same day in January with me.